I would like to call to order the school board workshop. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Here.
Buffalo?
Here.
Inge?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Paulson?
Present.
Thomas?
Here.
DeKalb zero.
Here.
Our school board workshop will begin with school board goal number five. Enter measures one, two, and three. Dr. Paul, would you like to come to the standard report?
Good afternoon, everyone. I thought you were up top, yeah. Trying to help you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, DeKalb area, Vice Chair Thomas, members of the board, Dr. Burtsong. This afternoon, we're going to review all three measures for school board goal five. And as a reminder to the board and the community, Board Five addresses the percentage of NPS graduates receiving advanced studies diplomas. The goal is for our students to meet or exceed the state average by the end of the 2027 school year. And at the time of this goal, the NPS average is 35.3 percent and the state average is 51.5 percent. Specifically, when we're looking at measure one, 47 percent of the 2027 graduating cohort must successfully complete the appropriate courses to be on track to graduate with an advanced studies diploma by the end of 2425. And our 2027 cohort is our current, what we consider temporary diploma. So as the data show, there was a decline of 1.2 points from the first to the second quarter of SY25. This places a 2027 cohort off track of reaching the target of 47 percent by the end of the year based on the metric devised for this measure. And currently, the highest percentage of the 2027 cohort can reach by the end of this year is 47 percent based on this metric. So a couple of things going well. Although we did see a decline from first to second quarter, the decline was 9.1 points less than the decline seen between first and second quarter last year. So we didn't see the same sharp decline. And historically, we've seen declines from first quarter to second quarter with grades, and that's what causes the decline in this data as well. The percentage of on-track students is 1.4 points higher than the same time last year. So we're still higher than we were quarter two last year, even with the decline coming into quarter two. Our highest failure rates for the SY27 cohort are in science and mathematics courses currently. And the 2027 cohort is below their initial data point where we started recording the data by 8.9 points. And I do want to point out, one of the metrics for this goal is around foreign language. So any current student in this cohort that has not enrolled in a language course, or that does not have a completed credit in language course, would fall off of the metric because they have to have three years minimum to make the advanced studies diploma. So that's why we saw a decline below the initial data point. So next steps. School counselors have identified and prioritized at-risk students using the Q2 failure data to flag students failing multiple courses and facilitating response to intervention using tutoring, edemenum, courseware, and by engaging families in early intervention meetings to prevent students from continuing to struggle. School counselors continue to encourage conversations regarding diploma types, which we really begin as early as sixth grade. Fifth graders rising to sixth grade right now are having those discussions when they're doing course enrollments. And this continues as students progress through middle and through high school. So again, when we set this goal, if you'll recall, we talked about this as really a long-range plan of how we really want to move this data up. The three years that we have left on this goal, they're tough to attain just because the students were really in place with their courses for the most part. We've also strengthened our integration of major clarity, which is a program around academic and career planning. And we've dipped that down into fourth and fifth grade as well. And students utilize this academic and career planning platform in middle and high school as they progress through as well. Each content area is providing targeted professional development to improve instructional practices in alignment with best practices. And all subjects are emphasizing planning with backward design, using data to inform instructional decisions to improve student outcomes. Teachers are refining the implementation of high-quality instructional materials, which we've talked about, you know, a lot here with HQIMs. And they're doing more collaborative planning and best teaching practices to enhance student learning. Departments are engaging in collaborative planning and instructional alignment to ensure consistency and coherence across grade levels. And then each subject area is working to increase student interaction with rigorous content through literacy integration, manipulatives, hands-on activities, and meaningful discussions as those are integrated into the curriculum more and more as we progress. So I'll pause here before going to the next measure.
Madam Chair? I'm sorry. Does the board have any questions? Ms. Basine, did you have?
I do. I was going to say I'll go last if others wanted to go. Do you have any?
Yeah, I do. So just looking over the data here, so the data shows we have some critical failure areas that we might not be able to meet the mark on. Are we flagging students before they get to high school?
So we do. So we do a lot of interventions prior to high school, and we do a lot of academic career planning before we get to high school. And we talked about this when we set this board goal up, was the tight timeframe. So our students that we're looking at here had already been enrolled in freshman classes when these goals were set. So if they were not taking a language at that point, at the end of last year, we encouraged them to take a first-year language, but you can't force them into the content, as we know. So we're also looking at this more long-term, which is data we're not looking at here right now, but long-term, we'll see effects of it on what we're doing all the way down to fourth and fifth grade to encourage, you know, academic studies that would move students more towards an advanced studies diploma.
Got it. All right.
Any other question?
Yes, follow-up to that. Can your department, or can the department provide to the school board a detailed breakdown of the failure rates by school and demographics and population so we can see where those are so we can make sure we get more interventions into those populations and schools?
So going back to discussions when the goals were put in place, that we're trying to stay more holistic as a board.
Got it.
Because the work of the administration is really digging down into the data. So we do monthly data meetings at our schools, and we talk with principals and leadership about that specific data to be able to offer supports specifically tailored to needs of each of our schools.
Okay. All right. Awesome. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
So if you mind if I ask a question first. Do we identify schools? So do we identify schools that we see students who? How to put this? Where we see students who choose not to go on the academic track? Like, do we have, like, are real identified schools or middle schools where students are choosing not to go on the advanced studies track? I mean, do we have? Is it, you know, is it more likely to occur at one school than another, or is it pretty scattered throughout the city?
It's, right now, based on our rate, it's pretty scattered throughout the city. But what we really do is a student who's making the choice to not go advanced studies, we make sure that they're encouraged and enrolled into CTE courses to make sure that they've got a career pathway.
Where we see students who choose not to go on the academic track? Like, do we have, like, a real identified school?
So we have several pathways where they can choose to go, you know, to welding or to medical, you know, or, you know, even our pre-K program has a pipeline right to be a teacher's assistant and a teacher. So making sure that they have something in place if they're choosing not to go advanced studies.
And there's no foreign language requirement for general studies degree?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Tanya?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Yes, thank you, Dr. Paul, for the presentation. I'm going to turn my stuff this way. So if you can refresh my memory, so right now, for this cohort, as you said, was 10th graders. Our current 10th graders were not on target for meeting the targets for quarter one and then quarter two. And the targets, I think it might be a good refresher for the whole team, just how you determined the targets initially, just so that we, you know, going forward.
Sure.
As a new board, you know, understand that.
Yeah, so last year, when we started with the goal, we looked at courses that students were already enrolled in so that we tried to set targets that were attainable based on course enrollment. And now, we also looked historically at how many of our 10th graders or our second-year students were or were not taking a foreign language or didn't have a credit by that point to know where we would fall within that range. So when we, you know, when we create our annual goals around that, those are the data points that we're looking at. And so when we finish a year out, we look at where did that cohort finish and what is the maximum possibility? So when we started this year, 47 percent of this cohort were able to, again, based on this metric, were able to meet the metric if they passed all their courses that they were enrolled in. Now, one of the things that will change a little bit, especially with this cohort, since they're only in 10th grade, as we transition to a four-by-four schedule, our students will have a chance to do three foreign languages again because they could do first semester, second semester, first semester, junior, and then senior year. So they could get back on track. And a lot of times, we'll have juniors that that light bulb will click, and they'll say, you know, what can I do to get to that advanced studies diploma? So we'll be able to accommodate that much more easily now with the new schedule. But as far as the data points, we look at the metric that we designed that would say to us that a student is on course for making advanced studies before we even set where our goal would be for this year.
And so then, looking at school year '24, quarter one, so these students were in ninth grade last school year. So we're looking at the same cohort of kids, right? So quarter one, quarter, so could, I guess my question was, so for quarter one in the current school year, for school year '25, could that include a group of students that may have started on the advanced studies pathway for ninth grade and then maybe decided along the way, you know, I'm going to go, you know, the standard diploma route or, you know?
Absolutely could.
So that could also account for some of the difference that we see in the current school year's numbers.
Correct. It could account for, so let's say we had a student in this cohort when they were in ninth grade, maybe they took Spanish one, but they weren't successful. And they decided then, I, language isn't for me, and I'm not going to do language. And at that point, they would have dropped out of our, out of this percentage because they wouldn't have been able, because they didn't earn the credit, and they weren't enrolled in another level-one language.
Okay. So then, how does that influence the, I guess, the true decline, you know, because we're looking, since we're, I noticed, you know, some of the comparisons made from school year to school year with the same cohort, but yet they could be different group of kids if some of those kids from ninth grade are no longer in the 10th grade. So, and then when you look ahead to 11th grade, you slowly, you know, as the years go on, they're more likely, you're going to see more kids who maybe opt out of advanced studies or?
Correct. But remember, as we're tracking cohorts, though, there might be a student who might be labeled as a ninth grader who's still in the 27 cohort.
Okay.
Because the cohort means you're going to finish in four years.
Okay.
So we're following a four-year pathway. So you might have, it's very possible where you have a student who's ninth grade, two years, and then jumps to 11th grade.
Okay.
And those are part of that cohort that follows it.
Okay. Okay. All right. And then, did you?
No, go finish.
So then, getting to, and this is kind of piggybacking on Jason's question, is what subgroups are struggling more? Like, what are we noticing about the students who are struggling more in terms of the failure rates in math and science? And are there, I mean, I think it's a fair question, are there specific schools where we're seeing a significant trend where targeted interventions at that school, at those schools are necessary?
So I guess I'd have to seek guidance from the whole board on this because the conversation has gone back and forth around, you know, there have been times where I've put some demographics on the report, and then I was told, don't put the demographics on here because it's confusing or it's too much deep in the data. You know, that's where we decided not to go with schools as well. So if the board decides that's a piece of data that we need to report on, then I'll be able to bring the data with me. But as far as right now, I don't have that data right on the top of my head, but I can assure you, as we do our data meetings, school by school, we have these discussions. High school principals, middle school principals are highly aware of this goal, and our counselors as well have had professional development on it. So they're looking specifically at their data set to know who needs the most encouragement and the most support.
Okay. And then my final questions are around strategies. So you listed, you know, in the next steps, the strategies. What of those strategies listed there have been, because they're the same, the last time you provided the report?
Very similar, correct.
So if we're not meeting the target, it would suggest that perhaps some of the strategies may not be working well or may not be working to the full, with full impact, or we might need to change something. So what can you speak to? What strategies are really working well, or what can we do to really hit those targets?
So again, I just really want to stress, the strategies we have in place are long-term. When this goal was put in place, you know, we talked about that the data points are going to be difficult because a lot of course selection was already made for students. You know, when they get to high school, they really plan a four-year pathway when they're coming into high school already. So trying to re-engineer those are difficult in some instances because students, they may not want to change, or parents may not want to change. So when we're looking at, you know, the top one where we talk about the school counselors, that's been good because it helps really give focus to the meetings and the students that they're calling in to have their one-on-one sessions with and to give the supports. When we're looking at major clarity, that's a long-term one. So I don't want to say it's working or not working necessarily because, you know, this year, we pushed it down to fourth and fifth grade to really say we need to focus more on academic and career planning, so it's longer term. So, you know, one by one, you know, some are showing effectiveness because we're having that immediate meeting with them and we're having discussions with them. But some, we won't see them really materialize for a few years out.
Dr. Mike?
I'd like to understand what type of exposure our middle schoolers are getting. Do we have languages in all of our middle years schools and programs?
So we have offerings in all of our middle school and middle-year programs. However, there have been instances where those have not made because of course requests. I'd have to look at the specific data. But we also are with encouraging, you know, trying to increase enrollment, and then that also comes, you know, to where I'm knocking on Dr. Agnew Scott's door about needing teachers that can teach world language courses as well. Because, you know, we've had some concerns there about filling some of the spots, too. But we're doing everything we can to have offerings at every middle and every high school. And in fact, this year, for students with Virtual Virginia and summer school, we're going to offer some language courses, too, so they can make up, you know, for a first-time taker as well.
Madam Chair?
Dr. Burtsong?
I'm sorry, I do see you.
I appreciate that, Ms. Basine. Going back to the point you were making, one variable that I really want us to consider is the fact that not every parent, you know, aspires for their child to achieve an advanced studies diploma, nor a child may not want that for whatever their career interests may be. So one thing we need to keep in mind, you don't need an advanced studies diploma to get into some of these, you know, colleges and universities, some very prestigious colleges and universities. And while this is a goal of the board to increase that, it may not be the desire of our parents and our students. And our parents want the very best for their kids. We want the very best for our students. But not every child wants to achieve an advanced studies diploma. There's a lot of work, as you can, as you know, that goes into achieving that, you know, especially as it relates to foreign language, which seems to be a barrier course a lot of times because you either have to have three of one language or two of two.
Correct.
And so if you don't get one, a lab, for example, a chemistry lab, or a chemistry course, or one of the foreign language offerings, then you're not going to achieve that diploma. And maybe you don't need it for what it is that you want to do long-term. So I just want us to be mindful of that. While this is a goal of the board, and we appreciate having this goal because we certainly want the very best for our children, it doesn't mean that that's what the parent or the child wants. And so that's a variable that we can't control. I mean, we can provide parents with the information so they can make an informed decision about what their child ends up doing, but that's something that cannot be forced on a family if that's not their desire.
Dr. Paulson, did you have a question?
No, I was just trying to advise you of Dr. Burtsong's.
Go ahead, and then I have a question.
Are we studying what other school districts and their implementations and tactics that they're using to raise their students' achievements in advanced studies diplomas? And the reason?
We have a real strong regional tie. So I work very closely with the CAO in Portsmouth, CAO in Virginia Beach, CAO in Chesapeake, and Newport News, and Hampton. And we have discussions all the time around what offerings we have and how do you have it. I will not say, though, that the advanced studies specifically has come up on the radar, but, you know, as far as academics and courses and what we're offering and what we're able to provide and, you know, achievement, we do have discussions and we share. And our region, too, is probably the strongest in the state. And we've been told that from outside of our region with presenters on what we do to share and what we do to support each other.
I have a question. Do we track the number of students who choose a CTE career pathway?
So we, we?
Do we have data on that?
We track certifications and, yeah, and who are completers, absolutely. And you'll hear some of that when Ms. Goshen presents on the CTE annual budget, the Perkins Plan. She always has a slide on there with data on our completers and everything else, too.
Right. So I'm wondering if there's a statewide metric that talks about the percentage of students that take the CTE path, and do we know where we stand against a statewide?
So I think it's a really good question, Ms. DeKalb zero.
If you don't have the answer.
Well, I do. It's a little convoluted, though. So we used to have the CCCRI, which was a part of the accreditation process. With the shift of accreditation to accountability, now we're going to have the three Es. And so we're going to start monitoring the three Es, and one of the Es is around employment. So we'll start to be collecting data specifically on that. But I will say, even to this day, the VDOE has not finalized everything within the three Es. Even though we're held accountable for it this year, it's still not finalized. So yes, there will be a metric, there will be a statewide metric around employment, enlistment, and enrollment. So we'll have those three data points that we'll be able to track based off statewide data.
I'm just wondering if, do we have, like, a higher percentage of students that choose, like, a CTE-type career track than other school systems, and could that be coming into play?
We track it.
Yeah. In this, you know, hard-to-achieve 51 percent?
Yeah, we do track that data. I don't have it in front of me, but we do, we do track that, and it will be changing as the three-E framework comes out to full play as well.
Anybody else have a question? Ken?
Yes. Would it, as you're talking about the diverging, we're not coming to where we, the board has said that we want everybody to have eight advanced placement diplomas. But if they're not willing to do it, do we need to change our goals?
We're only trying to achieve the statewide average, which is 51.5 percent. So that still leaves half of our, almost half of our population to take a different path. And I was just wondering, that's why I was wondering about the CTE, you know?
Does that look like comparison?
What does that look like compared, like, I guess an interesting metric would be how many students have attempted to do the advanced studies track versus how many have been successful in the advanced studies track?
Right. And that's, I think, what we would get to with this data. Like, even if it's not on track, you can see over time how that cohort is doing from quarter to quarter and whether, so that's what that's telling you.
Right.
And just for a little background, so this particular goal was to get at access and opportunity for our students, so access to high-level courses. So that's, and we, at the time, chose the advanced studies diploma as kind of a metric to get at that question because we saw that there were inequities around that.
All right, I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. And the others will likely go quicker because they are, as you've already, I think Ms. Basine noted, they are similar. So that is 5.2 right there. So measure 5.2 is 35 percent of the 2026 graduating cohort, which is our current juniors, would be on track to graduate with an advanced studies by the end of this school year '24, '25. As the data show here, there was a decline of 1.1 points from the first to second quarter, and this places SY26 a little off track to meet the 35 percent target. What's going well, although there was a decline from first to second quarter, the data show 1.1 improvement from the initial data point. So this cohort's actually ahead of their initial data point. And the percentage of on-track students is 1.3 points higher than this time last year. Our students in the SY26 cohort have the highest failure rates in mathematics courses that holds them back. And then enrollment in Level 2 foreign language class continues to be a barrier for our students in their third year of high school to reach an advanced studies diploma. However, again, as we transition to four-by-four, if we have a current student in this cohort who is successful in a Level 1 language course this year, they could take a Level 2 first semester and a Level 3 second semester and be back on track if that's their only barrier for an advanced studies diploma. The next steps are the same as the last one because they're still in high school, so very similar to what we have. So I'll pause here for any questions on the data.
And I meant to ask this also with the other cohort. Can you explain or share a little more about why, and you've talked a little bit about this in the past, but why we have such high failure rates in math?
I think the math-specific, you know, it's a course that builds upon itself. So if you've struggled first quarter to second quarter, it makes it more difficult to succeed in the course, similar to a foreign language course. It's building on itself as it goes through the year. So one of the things that we've put into place to help with that is with our edemenum courseware. When a student is unsuccessful on a unit assessment, the teacher can assign them the specific standards where they were struggling, and it will help them, it will help them relearn those standards and then reassess them on those standards so that we can do that immediately through the year and not wait till the end of the year. But, you know, the courses that build on themselves are traditionally more difficult, and we see more students struggling with them.
Okay.
Let me ask a question. Do you know which courses have the highest failure rates?
I don't have it on the top. But again, that's, when we, when we meet with our principals, in fact, yesterday afternoon, school leadership and academic affairs, we met for a while, and we talked specifically about data. We pulled up specific schools' data, and we dove right in through our data warehouse to look, and we looked, like, we picked an elementary school, and we looked by grade level, we looked at reading specific, we looked at the standards, and we could see even down to the teacher where the strengths and weaknesses were. Then we can go into the teacher, and we can go down to the student level, so.
I'm personally curious about the high school courses, and this is where the data nerd math teacher in the comes out. So I will request that from Dr. Burtsong because I'm curious to see if there is a single course in high school that is proving to be the biggest barrier for our students.
For the most, you know, our higher failure rates are in algebra and geometry. We see the most students.
They don't get algebra, too.
Correct.
Ms. Basine?
Yeah, and so that was going to be my next train of thought and also around, we know, do we have certified teachers teaching the math courses? And where are the biggest gaps that, you know, we might consider perhaps incentives or whatever to get strong teachers in those courses? So that was kind of a piggyback on.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't have the data for exactly where our staffing gaps are for math teachers specifically. However, I do know, you know, with, like, Ignite and EELCs and offering stipends, we're trying to bring in certified teachers to those schools where we see, in general, the most, the highest staffing needs.
Okay. Right. But, yeah, okay.
Okay. Last one. So this last one is for our current cohort, our 2025 cohort. So they're currently in their CTE. So they're currently in their senior year. The goal is for 32% to reach the advanced studies. And as the data show us, there was a decline of 0.9 points. Is this the right, hold on. This is 5.1, my apologies. Can't read the bottom from here. Squint a little harder. There we go. There we go. There was a decline of 0.9 points from the first to second quarter, and currently the highest that our cohort can reach is 32% for our, our 2025 cohort, as measured by this, this, the way we've calibrated the data. What's going well, although there was a decline from first to second quarter, the decline was 4.5 points less than the decline from first to second quarter last year, so it wasn't as sharp of a decline. And the percentage of on-track students is 3.6 points higher than last year at the same time, so we, we're seeing a steadier approach to the data. Our students in 2025 are 1.8 points below the initial data point, so when we first started tracking their data, they're 1.8 points below, and they're off-track of meeting the 32% target. And again, our councils are working with our seniors to, to do all we can to have them be successful in their courses, to get as many students to be on track for advanced studies by the end of this year. My pleasure.
I guess my one general question is, is it, is it an impossibility to get them on track, I guess, is? Because you're saying that once they're-
32% could make it.
Okay.
Based off their course enrollments.
Okay.
And that's the maximum that could make it based off course enrollments.
And that's the max.
Correct. Right, and right now, we're not at that 32% mark.
Right. Do you, do you- And that's the max. Okay.
Okay, never mind. I was going to say, do you have data on the ones that have already exceeded, but they still have to pass their senior year English class? They could have already taken all their foreign languages, all their math.
And they would be, they're included within this 32%, the ones that are, that we know are, they're going to make their, they're going to make the advanced studies diploma. You know, they're honor roll students every quarter, and they're enrolled in all the courses. They're included in these numbers.
I'm just curious if you parse them out, like, how many, how many students, what percentage of that students it is? But you don't have that data, so I'm just, it's just more of a curiosity, you know, is it, is it 25%? Is it 30%? Is, do we only have a couple on the cusp of not being able to make it, or is it a big percentage of that total?
Look at the data I have and see, because I might, I might surprise you on that one, but let me just see.
We love surprises.
So when we look at the 25 cohorts, we have that are, that are off-track. Now, I don't have an overall number of, of who is, who is solidly on-track for it. I just have off-track by course.
I, I just was thinking, that's an interesting data point to maybe track over the last couple of years, to, to see if we're pretty steady with 25% of our students we know are going to be, that are, we know are going to be all the way through, and dig in a little bit about the percentage that is off-track or could go off-track.
And the who, like, who-
Who and the why.
Or, or who is falling off-track. Yeah.
About the why. But it looks like you've identified the why, math and foreign language courses.
Yeah.
And, and interesting, though, the, by cohort, you know, there, one quarter, there was, it was English. You know, so sometimes quarter by quarter, it changes, too. So, but we, we do keep track of what courses they're struggling in, so that we can make sure they have the supports.
Well, thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you for-
Oh, sorry, Jason has a-
It's okay, Madam Chair. Do you have a number of how many students are enrolled in advanced studies diploma courses in Norfolk Public Schools? The actual number, not the percentage?
So it would, you know, I, I could, I could get that, because it would be 32% of our 2025 cohort-
Right, of course.
Which, you know, which is each, you know, each, we run around, around 2,200 students per year, you know, per cohort approximately. So that, that's where we would break it down to, to know the exact numbers.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Again, thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
Very informative.
The board will now go into closed executive session. Can I get a motion to go into closed executive session?
I move that we go into closed executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Martin has brought forth the motion, and Ms. Thomas has seconded it.
Motion to enter an executive session, March 19, 2025. Move that the members of the school board of the city of Norfolk go into a closed meeting for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2, dash 3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board pursuant to subsection 2.2, dash 3711A1 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are the discussion of personnel on today's regular personnel agenda, and discussion of candidates for possible appointment to the board's advisory committee, known as Educational Facilities Planning Steering Committee. Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2.2, dash 3711A2 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of students on today's regular student support agenda in consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation or regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2, dash 3711A7 and 8 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the closed session are for legal advice concerning any of, any of the matters set above in subsections A and B of this motion. Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
DeKalagero?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Good evening. I would like to call to order the business meeting of the school board for Wednesday, March 19, 2025. I welcome each of you who came to this meeting, every, who came or watch, who are either here in person or watching elsewhere to the meeting. A cor, a coram is present to transact the business of the school division. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Here.
Buffalo?
Here.
Inge?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Paulson?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
DeKalagero?
Here.
We will begin today's meeting with a pledge of allegiance with our student representative Kayla Ni-Green Ortiz. I would like to ask everyone to remain standing, as we will have a moment of silence for Jett Myrie, our Granby High School student who we unfortunately lost this past week. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to, to adopt the school board business meeting agenda?
Madam Chair? Yes. I'd like, I'd like to move to amend the agenda to include a vote on the long-range facilities committee as item 6.03.
Do I have a second?
I second.
The motion has been for, put forward by Ms. Bassin and seconded by Mr. Inge. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
DeKalagero?
Aye.
Next, we have agenda item 4.05, the superintendent's report with Dr. Burson.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair DeKalagero, Vice Chair Ms. Thomas, members of the board, our community staff. This evening, we have another wonderful video for you. Again, it just highlights all of the wonderful things that we are doing for children within Norfolk Public Schools. You will see a little bit about our Black History Month celebration, our Big Feet Meet that was held at Granby High School this year. We will continue, or we have continued with our school-to-school attendance challenge, and we believe that's making a big difference. We have some superstar teachers that we have recognized as rock stars. You'll see a little bit of that, and so much more. So let's roll the video.
Such a beautiful day, and the children are having a great time, many of them. They've been coming out to Little Feet Meet, and now Big Feet Meet, or spent several years with Big Feet Meet, and they know what to do, they're ready for it, and they're excited, and they're enjoying themselves. It means everything to them and to their teachers and families, so it's a great event for everybody and their buddies, their peer buddies. Especially at the middle school level, we really see where they are out supporting their peers with and without disabilities. I think it's amazing, we get to see them, I mean, and we are actually shocked at some of the athletic powers that some of these kiddos have when they come out here. So just like any other teenager or middle schooler, they're very excited, whoever can throw the farthest, or, you know, run the fastest, so they are getting to compete just like their peers.
The past two months dealing with snow have certainly presented some obstacles for the NPS attendance challenge. However, our schools have been absolute champs, proving that attendance counts NPS is no matter what. When our schools have passed the flag after rolling with the delays, we sure have witnessed some gorgeous days for the tradition, like when Lake Taylor School tapped the Academy of International Studies at Rosemont. During their challenge, the ambassadors put all their heart in by incorporating heart health to wrap up American Heart Month. The Clippers at Blair Middle School made sure to see green during their week by staying out of the red and in the green for attendance. We can't wait to see what the rest of our participating schools do for the remainder of the challenge, which ends on April 11th this year. As part of the school-to-school attendance challenge, NPS recognizes the schools that are leading the way in combating chronic absenteeism. Congratulations to the following schools for having the best attendance and for earning the most improved attendance for the month of February. Keep up the great work!
Let's take a look at some of our student athletes in action from this past winter season. Congratulations to Maury's Girls 4x200 Meter Relay Team for winning first place in the Class V State Track and Field Championships.
Jay Cox Elementary recently held a work-vehicle-themed Career Day. Students were introduced to various careers, and the vehicles used to do those jobs. Demonstrations and hands-on learning helped the students better understand how these work vehicles play a part in everyday professions. Another enrichment opportunity for our EELCs as families from PB Young Senior Elementary and Ruffner Middle Schools enjoyed gone. A cultural experience, those in attendance participated in various activities including drumming class, arts and crafts, and interactive storytelling. This event held at the Attix Theater also had plenty of entertainment, including a fashion show and dance performers.
Read Across America is a week-long celebration of reading, and our district participated with various activities. Military personnel visited and read to the students at Willoughby Early Childhood Center. The Academy for Discovery at Lakewood created Cafe Rita Latte. Students were able to sample different stories in a relaxed setting while making reading fun and interactive. At Lake Taylor School, the community came out to read to the kindergarten through third graders. School board members, central office administrators were amongst those that participated. Some even showed up in costume.
March is literacy month, and the nation's recognized as literacy month. So it helps us to leverage this month, even though every month is literacy month, in my opinion, in Norfolk Public Schools. But we leverage this opportunity to highlight Read Across America, which is a celebration, a nationwide celebration of literacy, and also our All Norfolk Reads event, which is a partnership that we have with All District Reads, which supplies us with a book that we all get to read at the same time. So combining these efforts together helps to bring the community's awareness of the importance of literacy. So it's great to have all of these things partnering at the same time in the month of March.
The kickoff of All Norfolk Reads had help from a special guest. Riptide from the Norfolk Tides helped pass out books at several schools, and Dr. Burson read the first chapter of Little Rhino, My New Team. Let's have fun reading NPS. The Mid Eastern Athletic Conference and Town Point Bank partnered with NPS for Read with MEAC.
I'm here today to celebrate the students of Rosemont Middle School in their pursuit for the Read with MEAC program and their love of reading. These students here today read more books over a period of time than any other elementary school, middle school students within the Norfolk Public School system.
Students got to enjoy music, mascots, and cheerleaders from MEAC schools. Academy of International Studies at Rosemont received a monetary donation for winning Read with MEAC. Also, as a partnership with the MEAC, NPS seniors got to attend a college fair that included all eight MEAC schools.
Education is the core fundamental of everything that we do, and working within the community, of course, is important to each and every one of us.
Students got the chance to meet with schools and ask questions. Dr. Burson was a VIP guest at the Norfolk State versus University Maryland Eastern Shore Men's Basketball Game and was recognized on court and presented with a check. Thank you to the MEAC and their sponsors for supporting Norfolk Public Schools. Ocean Air Elementary School reading specialist Faith Florence shared her passion for helping students improve their reading skills and the positive impact of one-on-one reading instruction during an interview with 10 on your side. For complete video stories and more division-wide information about Norfolk Public Schools, visit the MPS website and check out our YouTube channel, Facebook page, Instagram, MPS newsletter, and our podcast, NPS Unplugged.
And because we're in Norfolk, behold the green and gold. Congratulations to the boys and girls basketball teams at Norfolk State for winning the MEAC. So congratulations to Norfolk State. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Agenda Item 4.06 is Citizens Comments. Ms. Tanner, how many speakers do we have today?
For today's Citizen Comments, we have six speakers today. Today's speakers signed up for public comments before the start of today's business meeting. If you would like to provide public comments, you are required to state the agenda item or items or topic you are addressing prior to providing your public comments at this meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name, and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the district, and state your agenda items. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and then give facts or relevant data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the board directly via email at schoolboard@npsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School Board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given. Any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. Chairwoman Decalagero, our first speaker for today is Rakita Robinson, followed by Yvonne Wagner.
Good evening. My name is Rakita Robinson. I'm a first-grade teacher and a member of the Norfolk Federation of Teachers. For the last three years, I've been coming to this podium to share the concerns of members. These concerns have plagued our work climate and have affected our opportunity to achieve accreditation. We are committed to our community, our students, our parents, our staff members. We create this consensus in our belief of a toxic environment. This is not just being spent at the end of a full workday. Staff have learned not to push back, no matter how unreasonable the task they're being asked to do is. No one can have boundaries and protect their mental health. We can't expect a baseline of professionalism from our administration. I feel like we have just learned to live with this, but it feels like an abusive relationship. So I put a few questions to you, our wonderful stakeholders. What steps can teachers take if they feel they're being targeted by administration? How can a school board member effectively address issues of bias and toxicity in the workplace? What resources are available for teachers who are experiencing harassment or discrimination? How can communication be improved among staff to prevent misunderstandings and biases? What are the potential legal implications of a toxic workplace in education? How can parents and students support teachers facing a hostile environment? As an invested and very vocal teacher who is a native Norfolk'er, I am available to answer questions about highly qualified and effective dedicated teachers and how we can get schools to be a more positive climate and sequentially to get our schools fully accreditation. Thank you for listening.
Yvonne Wagner.
Good afternoon, teachers, school board members, superintendent Sharon Birdsong, Dr. Birdsong. My name is Yvonne Wagner, a class of 69 Booker T. Washington High School, and I would like for my colleagues, comrades, alumni to please stand. And I'm going to go quickly. I'm at 1100 Merrimack Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia, previous teacher, administrator, and board member. I am representing, you obviously said, I'm sorry. I'm representing the Unified Alumni Group of Booker T. Washington, which consists of parents, alumni, concerned citizens, and elected officials. I have received various calls from concerned alumni and parents about the frequency of the fire department coming to the school, Booker T. Washington. How are students recouping the instructional time for so many disruptions? And because I live close by, I do hear and see and ask to come down and see. The media center was just recently open. Why? Why was it just recently open? Enrollment is low? Is that by design? Students from Broad Creek are going to Norview when they are right down the street. I've walked at Booker T. Students from the South Side are bused, but who is being bused from the West Side? Where's the equity? Many concerns about, many of us are concerned about the curriculum. We are requesting a copy of the curriculum for Booker T. for STEAM, and how is it being implemented? Safety is another issue. Rats are everywhere, mold is still in the building. We are requesting a certified certificate to assure that the group, the group that mold has been removed from the school. Is it still a safe environment for children and staff? And hopefully, this will not be used against us, the problems will not be used against us, to take our school away from us. Also, the question of asbestos in school last year was never resolved. The group is still requesting documentations from the beginning of that year. It has been brought to our attentions that the windows need to be tinted because individuals can see inside the school and see the children. We, as a group, concern that our school will be taken offline. We have also reviewed the map of the various schools and are aware of the distribution of students. It appears that Maury is the favorite child receiving most of the students. Is that by design? I receive calls every day about what is happening to the schools on the South Side, meaning Booker T. Washington, Jaycocks, Lindenwood, Ruffner. Let me be clear, the legacy of Booker T. Washington is as important to us as Maury is to their alumni. We were given the school because the segregated South didn't want us there as a people. Booker T. Washington High School produced nothing but excellence. So let me again be clear, no D-E-T, woke, or whatever will take our school. Again, let me be clear, we are not called to fighting bookers for nothing. If individuals try and take our history, we will be like the shot around the world. We will fight for our legacy till the end, and this too is a promise. Thank you so much, and consider some of the things in our budget, in your budget, as you pass the budget for this year. Thank you.
Catherine Towler.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Madam Superintendent, Board Members, and all present. My name is Catherine Towler. I am a retiree of 39 years with Norfolk Public Schools and an active advocate for Booker T. Washington High School and Norfolk's Adult Education Program, where I continue to serve as an adult education teacher. It's a joy of my life, truly. I stand before you this evening with good news. For the record, I am before you to salute one of our very own, a graduate of Booker T. Washington High School. In the last few weeks, Dr. Delphine Lewis Joppe, Superintendent of Charles City County Public Schools, was named Region One Superintendent of the Year by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. This prestigious award recognizes Dr. Joppe's leadership and dedication to empowering leaders, supporting teacher development, and advocating for and acquiring resources to improve student outcomes. Dr. Joppe is also an avid promoter of life and civic development, right here in the city of Norfolk. Having grown up in Norfolk's Tidewater Park, she is deeply committed to this day to serving this city by working in partnerships with others to improve the quality of human life and to promote community betterment. Even with her busy life, she makes it a priority to pour into the lives of young children, as she has for much of her life. She is, has been, and is the children's choir director at her church. She has a lot on her plate, and yet she continues to do this faithfully. She finds a way to remember and to give back. Dr. Joppe holds a doctorate degree in Educational Administration and Policy Studies and an Education Specialist Degree in Administration and Supervision from the George Washington University, where she has served on the Washington University Educational Leadership and Administration Advisory Board. Her mother was in my class, the class of 1969. Please join me in giving her a round of applause. Dr. Delphine Lewis Joppe is a remarkable servant leader, a Booker T. Washington High School graduate, and the 2025 Virginia's Region One Superintendent of the Year. We salute Dr. Joppe, one of our very own.
Next, we have Jacqueline Epscott.
Good evening. I'm Jacqueline Epscott, and I did not come prepared to speak this evening, so you can thank Ms. Dorit Winfield that I am before you. But that's one of the things that my teachers, guidance counselors, and other supporters of Booker T. Washington instilled in me as a member of the class of 66, and I'm still standing up here at age 76, to say that, what would Booker T. say? And why was it named Booker T. Washington High School? And let's be frank, to appease the Negroes. We're not asking that you appease the Negroes today. We're asking that you allow equitable educational opportunities for all of your citizens, all of your citizens. Because guess what? It's not just going to be a small group who will become nurses. It's not going to be a small group who will become mechanical engineers. It will be the community working together. I'm sure as educators, you are familiar with Maggie Walker School in Richmond, Virginia. For those of you who don't know, Maggie Walker was a black woman. That school is thriving today. We will not go away, those of us who support Booker T. Washington High School. We will continue to come before you. I was second oldest of a family of 10 children. Half of us finished at Booker T., the other half at Granby High School. Two of my oldest two children graduated from Granby High School. They are not worried that Granby is going away, and we all know Maury High School is not going away. Let's be certain that Booker T. Washington, the man, is not forgotten. He gave so much. He gave so much, and we, we stand before you to let you know. We will not allow his name and his death to be in vain. Thank you so much for your attention.
Next, we have Liz Albert. Albert, excuse me. Oh, did she stop? Oh, she's here. She's right there.
Chairman Decalagero, Vice Chair Thomas, School Board Members, and Dr. Birdsong. My name is Liz Albert, and I do not have children in public schools. I agree that your current salary of only $3,000 a year is woefully inadequate for the time and effort required to do your positions justice. But unbeknownst to most people, at your retreat on March 12th, you voted to raise the board member's salary to $25,000 a year and the chairman's salary to $27,000 per year. This was done to specifically match the salaries of Norfolk City Council members and the mayor, respectively. This is an 833% increase in your compensation, and it does not hold up to the light of day. A look at the salaries of other local school boards is in order. Virginia Beach, a school district with over twice the number of students as NPS, pays their board members $20,000 a year. Chesapeake, a school district with 30% more students, compensates their board members with $16,000 per year. Based on this information, the increase in salary is out of line with the number of students you are responsible for overseeing. Also, to tie your compensation to city council's compensation is inane. While your work is indeed important, you have the advantage of a singular focus: education. Members of Norfolk City Council are responsible for making decisions on everything from public safety to economic development for an entire city. Their yearly budget is roughly $1.2 billion, whereas your budget is $450 million. The increase in salary is incongruent with the amount of money you are responsible for overseeing. Yet, despite all that, my major concern is your regrettable lack of transparency with this vote. Number one, the issue was placed on a discussion agenda rather than an action agenda, so no member of the public knew a vote was going to take place. Number two, retreats are not broadcasted and no videos archived, so there is no retroactive way Norfolk citizens can hear your discussion. Number three, there is no public comment session at a retreat, so you effectively eliminated any public input. It is now understood that a simple vote will not satisfy the legal requirement to make this ill-advised salary increase a reality. A written resolution will need to be passed by the board, so you do have time to develop a more realistic compensation plan. Do the right thing. Do your research. Bring this discussion and vote to the table once again in full public view. Thank you.
Diane Bacon.
Good evening. My name is Archie Diane Bacon, and I am a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. GEICO has partnered with Shoes That Fit and the ladies of the Norfolk alumni chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, to distribute sneakers to all the students at Richard Bowling Elementary School on March 27, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. The principal at the school is Yakita Boone. We would love for all of you to join us on that day as we distribute brand-new sneakers to the students at the school. Please come out, roll up your sleeves, and join us for this very special occasion. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this concludes our speakers for this evening. We'll move on to Agenda Item 4.07. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Ms. Maury Buffalo has put forward the motion, and Dr. Martin has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll to vote. Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
Inge.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Decalagero.
Aye.
Agenda Item 6.01 is the monthly financial report. Ms. Byvey, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Chair Decalagero, Vice Chair Thomas, School Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Birdsong. The February financial statement is being projected on the screen. The February report covers eight months. The February report covers eight months for the fiscal year that started July 1 of 2024. The report reflects July through February transactions that were recorded on or before March 12. As shown on the financial highlights page, general fund collections, oh, scroll up a little bit, for the first eight months totaled $294 million, which represents 63% of the general fund budget. Collections during the same period in the previous two years ranged between 60.8% and 61.8%. As with prior years, collections are based on cash collected during the period. As shown on the next to the last line of the report, by the end of February, we spent or encumbered $301.7 million, or 64.6% of the budget. During the previous two years, spending through March 13 ranged between 55.5% and 61.8% of the budget. As shown on the bottom line of the schedule, actual revenue collections are $7.7 million less than expenditures and encumbrances at this point in the budget. The pages that follow the summary report provide additional information on the budget, more detailed information. And in the month of February, there were no general fund budget transfers exceeding $50,000. Chairman, that's the end of my prepared comments.
Thank you for your presentation. I would like to open the floor for any questions or discussions.
Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Spivey. Under the under-800 non-regular-day school, the employee benefits appears that we overspent $166,000. Can you give a little background?
I will have to get back with you on the details on that. And just note, non-regular-day school is preschool. So, I mean, yes, I can clarify that, but I will can provide a response to the board when I go into that deeper.
Okay, and I had the same question for the non-LEA, the CSEP and GSA. It's underneath that particular, so if you want to follow up with me.
And this one, I am more familiar with the details. There are some of our, where we're the fiscal agent of organizations, when we pay a bonus, those, there's one particular one in this instance, and it's the jail. We, if we pay a bonus, it comes out of our operating budget rather than coming from the grant. And that's a grant requirement. So that is, and it may be a portion of the salaries as well. That's what's in that line. And so we estimate it during the budget process. But as you see, this is where it is right now.
All right, thank you. And then on the last line for the 2024 carryforward funds, is this an error, or can you give some background? So it says eight-point, almost 8.3 million, and in previous reports, we had a carryforward of about $11.2 million?
Yes, it is not an error. So these are the encumbrances that rolled over. As we prepared for the budget, one of the things we do is analyze our purchase orders and determine which ones should, which ones still have valid obligations behind them. And that amount that was calculated for the audit is the $8 million figure. So there were, bottom line, there were POs that were canceled because the commitment from the vendor was no longer valid. POs are only good for a certain amount of time. The vendor's quote's only good for a certain amount of time.
Okay, so our actual carryforward is the...
So that lowered the carryforward.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Are there other questions?
Madam Chair, Mrs. Spivey, calling your attention to calling your attention to the Bills and Payroll Report. So I'm seeing there's the transactions. Just want to get a little bit more clarification on the credit card payment. I see from Janu- well, not showing, because it's showing February. I track January at $2.6 million and $1.3 million for February, and it's three transactions each month. Can you elaborate what those are?
I can. So the cardholders make transactions throughout the month.
Of course.
But the accounts are charged, you know, in total over a certain number of weeks. So if we have P-cards that are, that the overall P-card system charges us every two weeks, that would be two payments. And this is something else, again, that I could provide you, if the board wants more detail on. But that's, and those are, you know, those are large payments, so it's not the individual cardholder, but the payment. And we have P-cards and we have corporate cards. The third one, I can provide you that information.
All right, thank you so much.
Of which three were char- yeah, that we make payments on in February.
All right, thank you so much.
Any other questions? All right. I need a motion to approve the monthly financial report, subject to audit.
I make a motion that we go ahead and accept the report as is, subject to audit.
Do I have a second? Mr. Inge has brought forth the motion, and Dr. Martin has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll to vote.
Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
Inge.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
DeCaligero.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Spivey. Now we'll move on to Agenda Item 6.02. The school board's fiscal year 2025 to 2026 proposed operating budget. A vote is required. We have a motion to approve the proposed operating budget.
Before...
We'll have discussion.
Can we see what the total amount? Or do you have an abbreviated presentation tonight or something for...
Do I have control?
Yes, you do.
The total general fund, $450 million. School nutrition fund, $26.9 million. Grants and special programs fund, $42.8 million. Capital improvement projects fund, $253 million. For all funds total of $772.9 million.
Got a side, Ms. Moore Buffalo? Does anybody else have any clarifying questions before we move to vote?
Is there a motion on the floor?
No, I need a motion on the floor.
I move that we approve the FY '26 operating budget in the amount of $772,902,725.
Second that motion.
Ms. Moore Buffalo has put forth the motion, and it has been seconded by Mr. Inge. Is there a discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Basine.
Tonight, I'd like to share some thoughts and express my views on the budget. So a decision to adopt the budget cannot be made on whether we find certain allocations agreeable or whether the budget satisfies the requests of special interest groups. Our duty is to assess whether this budget effectively advances each of the goals and critically whether it adheres to the non-negotiable boundaries the board has set. Currently, I personally do not believe there is sufficient evidence that the proposed budget accomplishes these objectives. In fact, I see clear evidence that it fails to uphold the non-negotiables that guide our fiscal decision-making. And for example, I will use the equitable distribution of resources, particularly at our harder-to-staff schools, as one example. For these reasons, I cannot support the adoption of this budget. Going forward, I strongly urge that we take a more disciplined and strategic approach, one that ensures every dollar spent is advancing the mission we have collectively committed to: improving student outcomes for all students in Norfolk Public Schools. So tonight, I'll be voting against the budget. Wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll to vote.
Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
Inge.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
DeCaligero.
Aye.
Agenda Item 6.03. Oh, the motion passes. I apologize. At this point, I'd like to go to Agenda Item 6.03, Educational Facilities Planning Steering Committee. And I would like to turn it to Mr. Cloud for him to make a comment.
Board members, it's been brought to my attention, and you may have noticed me walking back and forth behind you because of that, that the board has a regulation, BCF-R, which is designed to flesh out Board Policy BCF that concerns the appointment of citizen members to board advisory committees. The regulation explicitly states at some point, applicants chosen for appointment to a member position will first be presented at a school board meeting. The vote for appointments to a citizen member position will occur at a subsequent board meeting. And that raises then the question of your ability to vote on the list that's been prepared and shared with the public tonight. You have two choices. You can share the list publicly and follow this regulation and vote on the list at a future board meeting. Or you can, it would require a motion, a second, and a vote. You can move to waive the regulation in this instance and go ahead and proceed to vote the appointments tonight. So the first question is, is there a motion and a second to waive the regulation? And then it'll be a question, if there is, is there, what is the vote? There'll be a roll call vote on that. And if the vote of the majority is to proceed, to waive the regulation and proceed, then we can call for the motion and a second to vote to appoint the persons on the list that is now public. Someone's raising their hand.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Dr. Martin.
My concern since the beginning of this process has been that we have not been moving fast enough forward. And so...
Dr. Martin, we need a motion on the floor before...
I'm sorry. Okay, I was responding to Mr....
I think we need a motion to have discussion.
Okay. Then I move that we, what was the word, that we...
Suspend.
Suspend this regulation in order to vote and keep this process moving ahead as we have been advised before this meeting by our consultant. Time is of the essence, especially with the end of the school year coming up and the size of our committee, that we really need to keep moving forward. So I think this is an exception right now.
So you've made a motion to suspend Regulation BCF...
I second.
...R for the evening, and that has been seconded by Mr. Paulson. Dr. Martin, I would like to let you finish your thoughts.
I think I said, I think I'm done. Just that we really, time is of the essence. We really need to keep moving forward. And I appreciate the opportunity to suspend that regulation. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll to vote.
Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
Inge.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
DeCaligero.
Aye.
Motion is approved to suspend Regulation BCF-R for this school board meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the list of the Educational Facilities Planning Steering Committee?
I so move.
I'll second.
You need to, Ms. Basine, did you have a motion to state on this?
For the amendment.
We have the updated list. It's posted. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Did you want me to show it?
Yes, please show it.
Okay, good. Okay, awesome, yes.
I was just asking for a clarification on that. Mr. Paulson, would you like to state your motion?
A motion to accept the list of candidates for the steering committee.
Second.
Mr. Paulson has put forth the motion and has been seconded by Dr. Martin to approve the list of candidates for this, for the steering committee, for the Educational Facilities Planning Steering Committee. Is there a discussion? Ms. Tanner, will you please take...
I do have discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Inge.
Just wanted to say congratulations to those there, and I look forward to working with them in right-size in our schools.
Anybody else? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll to vote.
Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
Inge.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
DeCaligero.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you all for coming this evening, and this meeting is now adjourned.
Madam, we didn't do point... For the recovery school?
That was on the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay.